Ready? All right, if you're making stand. All right, thank you. Call student names, or? Okay, first up, we have some service awards.
I'm excited to be here tonight to celebrate the continued service of several of our employees. And we have ranging from five years up to twenty years that we're gonna acknowledge tonight. So, starting off with our five-year awards, Michael Sean Wyler. Give this to Sheik Gordon. Jacob Silvers. Dan Schfield. I do want to acknowledge Colby was with the department from two thousand and seven to two thousand and eighteen, and then took a leave of absence and then has since come back. Do you guys want to take? And then, Republic Works, we have Bryant Trepsen. He's our cemetery assistant. And for ten years, we have Paul Seaman. Here, and our city manager, Randy Shan. Staying with the fire department, we have Seth Kotzer. And then fifteen years of service, that was Seth, and then Kirk Priest. You got a couple weeks left. And then twenty years of service, we have with the fire department, Lee Mon. And then Judge Sheila Schultz. Round of applause for everybody? The five-year have flags, so if anybody who wasn't with the department or don't have the five-year the flags, I can give you one stop line and see when you sign.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you all. All right, next, we have the consent agenda. Anyone on the council have any questions on the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented and authorize the mayor to sign. Second?
McMahon?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Shields?
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Next, we have comments from the public. Does anyone that would like to speak to the council on anything that's not on the agenda? Ask that you say your name and address, please, for the minutes.
Blake Penn, P E N N, one-two-one-three, Main Street. They will.
Thank you.
I was, I had an issue probably a month ago with my house at twelve thirteen. I had a sewer clog up at my house, ended up having a plumber come out, ran a camera down, ended up finding that my service line from my house ran to my, under my neighbor's driveway, connected with his, and went across the road. So, instead of going to the trouble of damaging his driveway, we decided that it'd be better that we just run one line straight from my house across the street to the north where the sewer main is. And I had Dean Inscore, he did the work for me, and we got everything ready to go. And we, he, he went to get the permit, and I just, they, originally, they said it was gonna be around thirty-eight hundred dollars for the tap permit, and then I think they had cut it in half for me to nineteen hundred. But I just kind of felt that that was a little bit unfair, since I was, felt like I was making improvement to my house and doing it the way that it should have been done from way back when. And I just, like I said, the city was out nothing for it, and it, I incurred all the expense, gravel, concrete, having everything done properly. Was out of my house for two, three weeks almost without having any sewer, so I was just trying to, trying to plead a case on just trying to see if I couldn't get some, at least some, some of that money back, because it just seemed like it was kind of a little bit steep for the work that had been done, especially that it was all on my dime, and I, I felt like I, you know, everything went really smooth and whatnot, so I just wanted to see if there was anything that could be done about that.
We'll have staff continue to follow up with you if needed. Okay, we'll have them follow up with you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? You can say.
I need your handcuffs.
All right, next, we have the annual designation of depositories for city funds, and we do this, obviously, easily.
Yeah, so we are lucky enough to have five banks in our town, so if we designate all of them, we are able to get our CDs, and, you know, when we do loans and stuff, it's very competitive, so it is to our benefit to designate all five of them.
And this allows all of them to bid on everything that they want?
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions on that? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, mayor. Make the motion to designate Security Bank of Kansas City, Great Southern Bank, First Security Bank, First Option Bank, and Landmark Bank as depositories for the city funds. Second.
McMahon?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Shield?
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Thank you. The annual resolution authorizing the city manager to pay claims, another housekeeping thing that we did in January.
Yes, another benefit to us is allowing the city manager to approve the payment of these claims before they come to the city council, and it does actually save us on late fees and stuff like that, keeps our vendors happy that we claim them on time. So, yeah, I guess our bid wins on that one.
Do you have any questions on that one? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution twenty-two-five-zero-zero-one, authorizing the city manager to pay claims pursuant to K S A twelve dash one oh five B E.
I'll second that.
McMahon?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Shield?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Under new business, the first thing we have is the L D O text amendment for the keeping of farm animals, which we briefly touched on at the work session. This evening.
I'll go over it in a little bit more detail. Today, I'll read through all the new regulations. At the December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four planning commission meetings, a public hearing was held, and commissioners voted to recommend approval of the land development ordinance text amendment regarding the keeping of farm animals in pivot land. This was initiated due to a number of inquiries staff has received over the last year about keeping these animals inside the city limits. Current L D O regulations for keeping of farm animals are limited and require property to be a minimum of three acres in size. There are only nine residential properties in the city limits that would be allowed to keep chickens or any other type of farm animal under the current regulations. Staff has researched regulations in surrounding areas and proposed following section three, three fifty of the L D O. The proposed new wording would read, under general, this section applies to the keeping of farm animals in the city limits of paleo. The keeping of farm animals is also subject to the provisions of Chapter Two of the municipal code. For the purposes of this section, large farm animal means horses, ponies, goats, cows, dogs, pigs, and similarly sized animals. Small farm animal means chickens, rabbits, or other similarly sized animals. Animals only permitted on a single-family lots with a principal residence. So, people that have just an empty vacant lot won't be able to have them. And they're only on residential lots. The, like, Lake Mary's case where it's a commercial, they would sought to get a C U P, and all those same rules. All animals shall be kept in a manner as to not interfere with the life, health, or safety of other animals or humans. Animals will not be permitted to run at large or deposit excruciating matter upon the property of anyone other than their owner. Prohibited animals include roosters, turkeys, ducks, and other animals with frequent loud vocalizations will not be permitted. For number allowed, the minimum lot size required for keeping of any large farm animal is three acres. That will stay the same. Maximum of one large farm animal and ten small farm animals per acre. On lots smaller than three acres, one small farm animal is permitted for one thousand square feet of lot space, but the maximum of ten small farm animals. For enclosures, all animals must be kept in an enclosed structure or area located in the side or rear yard, and are not permitted to roam outside of the enclosure. Enclosures which are open to the sky must contain a wall or fence of sufficient height to contain the animals. Enclosures for chickens shall be a minimum of four square feet per chicken, and include a run. The combined area for the enclosure and run shall be a minimum of ten square feet per chicken. All enclosures shall follow the setback requirements of an accessory structure prescribed in Section three-two-ten. No enclosure may be located within twenty-five feet of any dwelling, church, school, or business structure located on adjacent property. Building permit shall be obtained prior to construction of any enclosure. For the keeping of bees, up to two beehives are permitted on lots of three or more acres and are subject to the following regulations. Fresh clean water must be kept within twenty feet of the hive, stand, or apiary. The owner of any hive or apiary shall install and maintain a flyway barrier six feet in height consisting of a solid wall, fence, vegetation, or combination thereof that is parallel to the property line, and that extends ten feet beyond the hive or apiary in each direction, so that all bees are forced to fly at an elevation of at least six feet above ground level over property lines in the vicinity of the hive or apiary. No beehive shall be placed or kept in violation of these requirements, and in no event shall be located closer than five feet to a property line, within twenty-five feet of any dwelling, church, school, or business structure located on adjacent property, and closer than ten feet from a public pedestrian path, within twenty-five feet of the edge of a public street, or anywhere other than the side or rear yard of the property. Penalties included with a violation of any term of this section shall constitute a public nuisance, and will be subject to all the provisions in Chapter Eight of the Public Municipal Code. That was a lot. For penalties, I, I put it under the public nuisance, just so enforcement would be a lot easier and cleaner if it does come down to giving somebody a ticket and going to court.
I have a question.
Yes.
The bees. You can't have bees unless you own three acres.
Correct. So, those nine properties would be the only ones in town that could have bees.
Well, they're already places in town that have beehives.
Legally, with these regulations.
Yes, and, and also, there's chickens in town already. So, the only reason I will vote for this is because they're already there, so they might as well have some regulations.
And that's, that was kind of my mindset with this.
Yeah.
A lot more clean-cut regulations.
Yeah.
Mitch, I have one quick question. If you go back onto the front page, go to section, the bottom paragraph, the offensive page, and I'm just gonna go down and, and highlight Stockman's Handbook. And the question I ask, is that something that changes every so often? Or is it just something that's pretty, what I, what I want to get at is, oh, some are gonna look up, and they're gonna like, well, we revised the Stockman's Handbook, do we do, I mean?
That's the old.
That's the old language.
It's getting changed. We're not doing Stockman's Handbook anymore. It's changed.
All right, well, good deal.
I don't believe that has been updated. I, do you know? Yeah, I don't believe it has. The edition I looked at was very old.
But you, but you took, you didn't reference on the new one.
No, I didn't.
All right. Scratch the Scott, Scott, uh, I'll have to look it up then.
Yeah, you don't have to do that.
There's, there's some work there. Thank you.
I thought about this after the study session, so I thought it didn't ask it then, but when, on C six, where we're asking that there's a building permit to be, I'm just thinking of various things that could happen, where, like, most people buy a coop and bring it in, or put up, like, a dog kennel and chain link as an enclosure. Those, that requires a permit to, to do, to bring it.
Yes, because it will essentially be considered an accessory structure, so if somebody bought one of those pre-kept sheds currently, even like an eight-by-ten, they have to get a permit through it.
Yeah.
They're supposed to.
Yes. So, so it'll still, it'll mirror an accessory structure, essentially.
I'm trying to think of the others, like, some of the ones I've seen around, like, even the small three-by-three foot kind of barn design, like, once, the, any, anything is gonna, there's a dog kennel, it's gonna be a permit.
What? And that's partially to verify placement, to make sure it's off of those property lines for the setbacks. And, and that's part of the reason we have building permits for the smaller sheds, because under the residential code, anything under two hundred square feet doesn't require it.
Yeah.
Uh, but we've amended that. That way, we can regulate the setbacks.
Okay.
It's the main, main reason of that.
Are those reasonable fees on those?
Yes, the same fee as a small accessory structure, at least thirty dollars.
Okay.
I think I've been in here for a while, and after, I think red commission was like the number one thing that people would always ask about, and number two were chickens. So, I think this is a good example of responding, but making the boundaries work for us and the neighbors, so I think this is, you guys did a lot of work on it.
You guys did a lot of work on it.
Appreciate it.
And I have some friends that have some chickens, and then the raccoons come and kill the chickens, and then snakes like the eggs, so it's, you know. Yeah, ongoing.
Yeah.
It'll be a never-ending, never-ending deal.
Yeah. Some people want to do farm things until farm things happen.
Everything likes to eat chicken.
When you find that out expensive.
Good job, well done, Mitch, on this. Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number three-two-two-a, amending section zero-three-point-zero-five-oh of the land development ordinance, this mayor.
A second.
McMahon?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Shields?
Reluctantly, aye. All right, motion passed. Thank you. Next, for another L D O text amendment for the exemptions from sign regulations.
Yeah. So, this one shouldn't be nearly as long-winded. The December seventeenth planning commission meeting, public hearing was held, and commissioner voted to recommend approval of the land development text amendment. Regarding exemptions of political sign regulations, this was initiated due to staff finding that current regulations were not in compliance with Kansas statute twenty-five, twenty-seven, eleven, staff proposing a change of section seven, one oh two, A five, be consistent with Kansas statute. So, currently, our language in the L D O for subsection A five is, following signs shall be exempt from the requirements of this article, except for the provisions of section seven, one oh four, and seven, two, five. Political campaign signs not exceeding four square feet in area displayed during no more than a four-week period preceding a one-week period following an election. Kansas statute says, no city or county shall regulate or prohibit the placement of, or the number of political signs on private property or the unpaid roadway streets or county roads on private property during forty-five-day period prior to a two-day period following the set election. Cities and counties may regulate the size and setback distance for the placement of signs so as to not impede the sight lines or sight distance for safety reasons. The proposed new language would read, under total exemptions, the following signs shall be exempt from the requirements of this article, except for the provisions of section seven, one oh four, and seven, two, twenty, so that part will stay the same. And subsection five will read, political campaign signs not exceeding four square feet in area displayed no, during no more than forty-five-day period preceding and two-day period following an election. But just to change the timeframe to match what the state says.
And they're still not allowed in the city medians, correct? Because that's not private property, right? Or is that wrong?
Traditionally, yes, legally, we can keep them out of.
Because that's not private property.
Correct.
Okay.
It would just be the, the right-of-way.
Right.
On either side of it.
Right. So, if it's in someone's yard, we can't.
Yard or business.
Our median, the parking.
Or.
The parking area.
No, like, from the.
On Baptiste is what I'm thinking. I like to stick him in there.
Or like, we own a couple little sections along Baptiste. The triangles, little, uh, stoplights, places like that still won't be allowed. It's just along the businesses.
Yeah.
That everybody wants to put them out as close as they came to the road.
But if the business has an issue.
Yeah, they still have to get.
Something about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
They, they normally.
We just can't come.
Right, right.
They still normally get permission.
They're probably.
And if they don't, then, then the business.
Because I'm, I'm always mostly concerned with the medians because of site and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, especially turning through all the different ways.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that I was reading that correctly.
Yeah.
And if somebody puts a sign out too soon, the police can pick that sign up and take it to City Hall.
I can.
You take it, okay.
Yep.
But this one has forty-five days.
But I will remember that.
Oh, well, it used to be, it used to be the city police.
Well, if it was city police when I was a police officer, then somehow it just followed.
So, they said, we're.
I know.
You're thinking this one, yeah.
We still like him for that.
Put signs out early.
Well, sometimes they put them out for the primary and then they leave them out. So, well, we'll have a couple years early before we can air it up again, probably. All right, any questions, any other questions about that, I guess? If not, is there a motion?
Okay, I move to adopt ordinance number three-two-two-nine, amending section zero-seven, one oh two, A five of the land development ordinance. Second.
McMahon?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Shields?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Good.
Next, we have the N B L Technologies Agreement.
Yes. The city has used the services of a nineteen company. We don't have anyone that is employed, so we are trying to move to a new company. We currently have Iron Edge, and it's not going so well. So, after getting three bids and reviewing those, N B L Technologies was the company we chose to go with. So, we need to just move forward and approve the service agreement with them.
Reason that we're much, they're reminding, because I know we talked about this a little while back, because they're just slightly higher. Isn't their local, right?
They actually have a city and a police department.
Okay.
G F I did not.
If I remember right, also, there was something about if they had to come out with a fee, there was something, maybe this G F I didn't have something included that N B L did.
They, yeah, G F I, they had two different, I think they actually knew what our budget was and just made a thing. They currently do our coffiers.
Okay.
So, I think they're like, oh, we can probably do that, too, and I didn't, I said.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, N B L actually does have a city that they currently work with.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve the agreement with N B L Technologies to provide technology support services.
I'll second that motion.
McMahon?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Shield?
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Thank you. Now, we start standing in line. All right. Street sweeper purchase.
All your bucket list items before you go.
The city's current street sweeper is a two-thousand-and-seven freight liner, Elgin Eagle. The city has been building up money in the Murph account for plans to purchase a new street sweeper in the future. I found one on, I found a two-thousand-and-sixteen Elgin sweeper on Purple Wave Auction that looked like a nice sweeper. It is an online auction house. We've used them to sell our surplus stuff before, too. But the street sweeper was sold by Castle Rock, Colorado. Tony and I, mechanic, before the bid closed, drove out there and looked it over, and had them send us the service records and everything. So, we, we did our due diligence on checking this thing out. And we came back then, and with a brand-new sweeper costing upwards of four-hundred thousand dollars. We started bidding on this sweeper. We ended up with a bid of ninety-six thousand dollars. That included the sweeper freight, freight and home, and you had to pay a ten percent buyer three, three and a half, too. So, we actually bought the sweeper for, like, eighty-four thousand, but you have excess. And although the range is outside the city manager's personal authority, the purchase was proved in good faith, knowing the amount of money would be saved, and if you threw the money was available in the Murph account, and the fact that staff did their due diligence on the purchase prior to putting in the final bid, we would ask the city council, please agree with us, two thousand and sixteen, we were using the funds out of Murph account.
Missed this one, please.
If there's no questions, mayor, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the two-thousand-and-sixteen Elgin Eagle sweeper in the amount of ninety-six thousand dollars, this mayor.
I'll second that.
McMahon?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Shield?
Aye.
Thank you. Glad it worked out.
Yep.
Ended up sending this money in a long round, sure. Which I was trying to pull back my city manager thing, and I know it's a little bit different situation, but technically, it falls under that. It's just a little higher than we normally. All right, next, we have the canvas buildings purchase.
The, we have three of these canvas buildings out of Public Works and one down Cemetery, and they're, they're all in need of recovery. They, the ones, two of them are at Public Works. We took down a cave neighbor's place, brought them over there, we decided, like, the, the tarp's were, tarp tearing on, we got big holes in them, they look pretty bad. And during the two-thousand-and-twenty-five budget process, we plan to recover the buildings by budgeting the funds through each department in the Public Works and utilize, utilize the current canvas buildings. The attached bids proposal that I received from K B Construction, they're out of Garnet, goes for one, fifty by hundred is twenty-two, one fifty. Building two is fifty by sixty, and it's fifteen, one hundred. Building three and four, thirty by sixties, and they're both ninety-three, seventy-five. These are twenty-year structure, or you're twenty-year coverage, and the purchase will be utilized for the budgeting, budget funds, as well as thirty thousand dollars out of the harbor fund. We recommend the approval of the estimate for four canvas buildings from K B Construction in a total of fifty-six thousand dollars. The estimate's all attached.
How much for Martha?
Thirty.
It's right there on your memo, under, as it goes.
And Kurt, you said there was one more at the cemetery you were thinking of, but you're holding off on it.
We're gonna go ahead and do it now.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, that's what I thought there was. Okay.
To do that.
Okay.
That's why we pulled some out of Arfa so it wouldn't drain all of the account. So we only, that's. It's approximately thirty um with the shipment still wavering. That's like the little bit we'll have left and we need to go, we needed to go ahead and designate it. So we wouldn't lose it, pay it back. So this is a great way to just deplete that and move on. So.
Yeah.
And it will help, it'll give Brett some money to use in the future if something happens. We didn't drain all of our maintenance. Funds for these buildings, so it was kind of, it worked out too well and stuff, so.
I thought it had changed a little bit.
You know, just just a couple of comments on these, um, let's go to the sweet sweeper purchase and uh and the canvas building purchases. You know, uh, a city like ours, we have to look away to save money and we always can't buy new and I understand. Uh, it can be difficult to buy used and do these things under the auspice of a of a city or county government. Uh, well, well, well done, city staff. Uh, I remember when the acre building came out and they asked the county and the city ended up getting it. I seriously doubt that you could buy that big building over there. For the fifty-six thousand today. I don't, I don't, I don't think you'd do that. And you, and their tarp's only last so long. But something that flies under the radar is that. Uh, with those buildings like that, and I don't believe we have lights in those buildings, do we?
No.
No, and you gotta realize if you have put lights in those, and especially if you're salt and everything else like that in that corrosive environment. That you'd have to really spend a tremendous lot of money put the lights up. And the one you got right now, so uh. The canvas buildings, I'll be, I'll I'll be happy when I drive by and they're and they're all looking good and. I would like to make a motion on this, uh, Mayor, but I'll turn it over to the council members for any comments that they have.
Maybe I'll take the questions on it. It was a nice hit, man. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the estimated of the fourth canvas buildings from KB Construction. For the total amount of fifty-six thousand dollars, Miss Mayor.
Second. McMahon.
Hi.
Ace.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shield.
Hi.
Right, thank you. Patrol unit purchase.
That's me.
That's you.
This is buying new.
The winner for the evening.
Uh, so Police Department currently has uh four more explorers that are are marked units. Uh, we purchased those originally in two thousand twenty-one. Um, and they were our primary patrol vehicles. Based on the replacement schedule, which is every four years, these vehicles are slated to be moved out of primary patrol rotation. And they'll be utilized as administrative purposes and detectives. Uh, we received three bids, a Hendrick Chevrolet for fifty-six thousand. One hundred and five dollars for a Chevy Tahoe. A way for Ford Interceptor. Current what we have, it was forty-nine thousand five hundred and fifteen. And Lewisburg Ford Interceptor came in at forty-eight thousand six hundred and nine seventy-six. Um, we're requesting approval for the Lewisburg Ford. Uh, for those four vehicles at a total of one hundred and ninety-four thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and four cents. There is equipment that goes along with this. The total equipment. Upfitting for all four and separate, all four SUVs is forty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. Those part fours off and trade in are two thousand fourteen Dodge Durango. Um, at a value of five thousand five hundred. Total costing vehicles and upfitting will be financed through a bank loan. Annual payments are included in the department's general fund budget. The approximate requested financing will be two hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and five. Thirty-two cents. We recommend approval. Um, approving the bid for the Lewisburg Ford in the amount of one hundred and ninety-four thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and four cents. The purchase of four, twenty twenty-five Ford Interceptors for the Police Department.
So on here, are you also trading in three two thousand seventeen Fords?
Uh, no, we are rotating.
So just the Durango is good traded in.
Okay, we are finding that we need a little bit more to back up. I don't know if it's our drivers or what, but um. I'm just kidding, but it it will. Take a lot less stress off of us if we haven't a form back.
Yeah.
Rather than just running four and four.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
We have four. I mean, we had four total. We're adding four.
So currently have four on the street.
Yeah.
We're replacing those with four new ones. And then those four that are the old ones are being rotated back into as unmarked units for our detectives.
Oh.
In the administration.
Oh, it's okay.
Usually we trade four and get four new. We're just gonna keep. These.
Yeah.
Four. Yes.
Yeah. After all, you get brand-new cars. All of us get the old cars. Um.
Chief, I think you got a great buy on your, not been a map to the back. I know that can really be a uh costly deal, but all the can prices right here. I'm not gonna compare it to somebody, but you gotta get, you gotta get a good price on it.
Who does all of that, the fitting?
So we use a company out of Lee Summit, um, and we've used him for. Two, two rotations, so we've used him for the last eight years technically. Um, we've used him twice. This will be at least his third, if not maybe his fourth, but uh he does a good job. He's very familiar with this. Um, he's a full-time firefighter at for Lee Summit, but this is his company on the side.
But Lewisburg was able to. Help us.
The interceptors are special models made for long.
Yeah, they are a police package, um, so they come with. A lot of the internal stuff. Is set up so that we can add stuff to it. And take out all the. The civilian amenities, um, and keep it more bare bones so that we don't have to rip it out to replace it. We've got a long time to get these in when we approve it. It takes several months. If we get them by June, July, we'll be happy.
Same color as current, right?
Yes, we're using the same color.
I really wanted to ask that, but I didn't.
That's a big discussion.
I mean, I'm aters.
It, yes, and it is a process here at PD. We do put it up first out. Um, let the guys pick what colors and and they. Pretty much unanimous decision to go with. Color. I think I was the only one that wanted to change, so. All right. I'll go with the.
All right, any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve the bid from Lewisburg Ford in the amount of one thousand, one thousand ninety-four, one hundred and ninety-four thousand. Four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and four cents for the purchase of four. Two hundred and twenty-five Ford inters- interceptors for the Police Department.
Second. McMahon.
Hi.
Ace.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shield.
Hi.
Right, what you guys? All right, next we've got the dangerous structure at six inches. You didn't make Trevor come.
He can't live all the way up against city.
Yeah. Once he moves down here closer.
Yeah.
I've already told him that. We'll be taking that over. So, the process for a municipal, you mean, yeah, municipality requiring. The repair or removal of structures which are no longer fit for human life. Or which constitute a hazard to public health, safety, or welfare is established under KSA twelve. Seventeen fifty through KSA twelve seventeen fifty-six. The initial step in the process is for the governing body to review a report prepared by the enforcing officer. After reviewing the report, the governing body by resolution may set a date, time, and place which. Time all parties in interest may appear. And present evidence why the structure should not be condemned in order to be repaired or demolished. For KSA. Twelve. Seventeen fifty, the enforcing officers shall perform a preliminary investigation of the structure. Following the investigation, and if the investigation discloses a basis for such charges, the enforcing officer shall prepare a report. Of such finding and submit it to the governing body. Building Inspector Trevor Buckles has conducted the preliminary investigation and a formal report of property located at six ten East Cascaskeia Street. For the city council to review. After reviewing the submitted investigation and supporting documents, the governing body may deem the condition of the structure to be unsafe or dangerous. If the governing body deems the structure to be unsafe or dangerous, then a public hearing shall be set by resolution. Resolution sets the date, time, and place at which all parties of interest may appear and present evidence why the structure should not be condemned or. Ordered, repaired, or demolished. Due to following KSA. Twelve seventeen fifty-two publication requirements. Resolution would set a public hearing for March eleventh, twenty twenty-five at six P M at the Pale Justice Center. As an alternative, the governing body may find that the investigative report and documentation reflect that the condition of the structure does not constitute. In approving a resolution, twenty twenty-five dash zero zero two to set a public hearing for the topic. Staff's recommendation is approving resolution twenty twenty-five zero zero two, setting a public hearing to be held on March eleventh. Twenty twenty-five at six P M. At the Pale Justice Center, eight oh five North Pearl Street, pale offenses. And your attachments should be Inspector Buckles' formal report, site pictures, and a draft resolution. And I accompanied him with his inspection of it. Uh, some things noted in the inspection. Were rotten wood throughout the building. Building is completely open to the elements due to the lack of doors and holes in the wood siding throughout. Animals moving freely in and out of the building. Vegetation is completely taken over the outside of the building, as you can see in the pictures, and is now spread to the adjacent power pole. Has a lack of vertical wall studs. Some walls. Sections span approximately eight feet without any support posts and wall sections appearing. They'll only be held up by rotten wood siding. Broken windows on the south and east sides of the building. Roof of the building is in disrepair, allowing weather entrance from above. I have. Spoken to the property owner throughout the year. Uh, I sent her a letter at the staff level. Uh, to try to get this taken care of before we had to go to the next level. Uh, her family did clean it out at when we. Initially inspected it myself and every time Inspector Kinsey. Um, it was full of junk trash. We couldn't get inside of it. Um, so that would have been the first step. In tearing it down. Her family throughout the summer cleaned it out. But I haven't seen any progress and I haven't been able to get anywhere in the last several months. Wrapped it.
Mr. Mayor, any questions on this?
I'll make a motion. No, we have any questions. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve resolution two oh two five dash oh two, setting. Uh, the public hearing to be held on March eleventh. Twenty twenty-five at six P M at the Pale Justice Center, eight oh five North Pearl Street. Pillar Kansas, six six oh seven one, Miss Mayor.
I'll second.
Man.
Hi.
Ace.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shield.
Hi.
All right, thank you. All right, staff reports. Jessica, since you're here, do you have anything?
No, just finishing up year and stuff and all the new year things. We do have had um. Several interviews and we have some new hires coming on, that's how Public Works. So.
Good.
And um.
Chief.
Um, not a whole lot. Um, you're definitely busy spending money, obviously. A lot of research on cars and. Um, we got a lot of employees to replace and uh open vacancies, but we do have. Uh, one that's coming on starting very soon. Uh, he's gonna be our new lieutenant. He's on, he's coming back to us. He left us many years ago and we're looking forward to see all the. The uh changes that he brings and he's got a lot of work to do. We've got a lot of, we got a young department that's gonna require a lot of training. And I, that's one of his areas he's good at. So we look forward to seeing what he can do.
Yeah, I just would like to say, I don't, I'm not real good at math, but I think he did spend, I'll spend major. I. I don't know if you were gonna take this range or not, but but like Jess said, we do have a lot of new employees that that we've been interviewing and. We've got a couple more interviews Thursday. Uh, we got a few coming, getting ready to start, but. At the, the work study, Brett was there, uh, Brett Marler, I. Take it some of you didn't know him then, we didn't, we didn't realize that, but Brett Marler had been helped, he's my, he'd been my public work assistants for. Fifteen months or something. Yeah, quite a while. And he has got freed up from the sewer plant to come in and be more of an assistant than sewer plant operator, so. It's been a big help. And we was just talking today, it just seemed like since first of January, we have just been busier than. That we have in a long time, and I don't know if it's because I try to get things done and finished up and done before I leave or what, but it just. It's bad, but this is Brett Marler and he is talking about, or is planning to do an intern interview. Um. Fill my position, so.
Again, someone's trying to make you permanent, just so we're clear. Yes, Brett Marler has agreed to be interim, thankfully, and we're excited and he's gonna do a great job.
Yeah, he's doing fine. He's doing a great job. It's just. He realizes there is a lot of headaches, so I think he'll do a great job.
I don't know, his reputation must precede him because we went to Grant class together. And somebody tried to recruit him. At the great class, so I know he's in demand. So we're lucky to have him.
Again, this will be my last council meeting, so.
Don't smile, Kurt.
There is a regard celebration, January thirty-first from forty-six Country Club. Y'all, like to see y'all there, be nice. Thank you.
We'll miss you, Kurt. Yeah. You've been, you've been wonderful.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, Mitch.
Um. Mine's not as good as that. It's been pretty slow for us. It's winter. Uh, we finished off last year with four hundred and twenty-eight permits. Uh, by more than the year before, so that's good. We only had six new homes last year. Within the last, the last quarter of last year. And to start out this year, we've had a ton of interest in some empty lots and uh people want to build around here. Hopefully those will all come to fruition. Uh. Permits have been trickling in, uh, even despite the weather. There's still been a lot of maintenance and roofs are. Apparently starting to kick back ready, so. That's a good thing. Uh. As of now, we don't have any agenda items for the planning commission meeting next week, so more than likely not have a meeting unless something comes up. The next day or two that can be. Pushed in, but. That's all I got.
I saw the AEC has started moving dirt on there, stuff.
Yeah, they're doing some kind of. Preliminary grading to. Get everything where they can before they get to plans.
Yeah.
I got one other thing I meant to add to is this snowstorm, ice storm has been a, a real. Hey, it's, we're still fighting it. We're still trying to get the ice off. It's, it's just, it's given us a fit, so we were concerned about running out of material. We are starting to get some material in, so we're gonna try to spread a little bit more material in the morning and. Hopefully the next three days, temperatures getting up like there are a little bit of rain on Thursday, that'll help melt some of this stuff, but. Some of them side streets, we know they're bad and we just can't get the ice off, but we're, we're still fighting every day, so.
Well, every day they melt, and then every day they refreeze them, so.
We've had a lot of equipment breakdown and stuff, too. A couple of short staff, so it's, it's been a battle, but we just aren't used to that, too. We have to have stuff like this.
Well, such a weird. Presentation. Yeah.
And it all melted together into one big chunk of ice.
Yeah.
But for the most part, many thorough players have covered down just some of the side streets.
Yeah. You guys have done well considering.
Well, i- if it's any consolation, Kurt and Brett, I've been doing this since nineteen eighty-four. And been through a lot of storms and uh. This is probably, you know, you go back and you could kind of lose them, but this is the, the way that this one was so difficult is uh. It's actually good news for your breath. This doesn't happen that often. That you don't get this, but well, you know, it's, and I don't want to get into the, 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 the uh. The, the basics of it on exactly what happened uh for us to get here, but it just was a convergence. Of a lot of things and the net result was is that you melded into a solid block of ice and then. After you got the solid block. after you got the solid block of ice and then you tried to, to chew it down from the top down. And it gets cold and you, uh, got to, uh, make sure that your equipment can run. Uh, I don't know whether you got new employees, one of the best known to start new, new employees on.
I don't.
You know, as far as that goes. Uh, but yeah, this, this thing does not happen that often when it was all sent in. And I thought y'all did a really pretty good job. The amount of time that you gotta get everybody out there to push it is very limited. Uh, it looks like we're gonna have the weather work for us a little bit. But typical storms around here, you'll get some snow, the guys will go out and do it, warms up into the forties two, three days later. And then everybody's happy and we all go home.
Yeah.
Airsoft and you'll, you will run into these. And like I said, I can count on one hand in forty years, how, that I had to fight storms, storms like this. Uh, another thing is, is I'm glad to hear you get material in because I always thought that the material you had on hand was material you used by head for the whole year. And it gets so difficult, especially down in these huge snowstorms. Everybody wanted, everybody, they don't realize, everybody wants at the same time.
Yeah.
And there's only one place I think you can get it at and that's, that used to be, that's just assault, but, uh, again, thank you Brett for what you all did out there and Kurt, thank you for what you guys did out there. It was a difficult, difficult, difficult snow. Ice.
One around here, it's actually hard to prepare because it's some years doesn't snow at all, so. You guys handled it well. All right, Randy?
No, he took mine.
I started me again. Nothing, okay? And JR?
Just Kurt, want to thank for working with you and people don't realize is that, uh, you go back into the nineteen seventies, Kurt's dad, Kurt's dad worked with my dad and I never had a chance really to work with Kurt back in the construction industry. But I did work with his dad. And his dad was such a gentleman and treated me so fairly out there, in which I really, really did appreciate when it all seemed done. So then when I found out that, that Kurt got hired for the City of Pillar, Kurt, I was really excited because I knew that, uh, they were gonna get a gentleman and they were gonna get a good man in there. So uh, I want to tell you on behalf of myself personally that I very, very much appreciated you coming in and, uh, doing the work that, that, that you did uh, for as far as that goes. It's got a bittersweet because you and I were young people. We started out, it was our dads that we worked with and now we're the dads and the granddads and there is, Brett, congratulations to you. It, it, it's a, it's a big job, but, uh, I, Randy's has a remarkable uh, run of hiring good people and I don't think it's gonna run out anytime soon. And so again, uh, I think you had more hair a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, it's, it, it's, it's a big deal. And again, congratulations and Kurt, good luck on your retirement. I heard, I think I talked to your wife, you're going down to Mexico or something.
Yeah, first federal, we're taking five days to go to Mexico. I actually worked on two different jobs with your dad. He was superintendent to Reno in seventy eight, seventy nine, so.
So everybody acts like, you know, the trouble is, is as you get hurt and I, uh, we were raised by the greatest generation, World War Two vets. And I can tell you right now, well, y'all hear about good things about it. They weren't the easiest people to work. They weren't the easiest people to work. But, uh, yeah, I remember, like I said, but you, because you worked for dad back in seventy eight, seventy nine. And we're dating, we're dating ourselves.
Check grade on on sixty ninth highway out there at Lewisburg. Let's see, we walked, go dad running, I checked grade, your dad was superintendent on that, and I thirty five John Drive, John Paxton out there, he would shoot. The old walk code, know it well. Anyway, that's all I had.
Yeah, um, thank you for everything. And I'm just excited because I'm gonna have more free time to take care of. Um, and the city streets aren't great, but they're better than they were and they're gonna get better. And it was I don't know if I've ever seen something like that. I mean, our, we shoveled and shoveled and picked, we literally were picking ice with the claw side of a hammer just to get it off of our sidewalk for the melody. It, it was incredible, so nice job. Oh. Okay.
Yeah. So, uh, I always thought it was, where in my neighborhood, it's difficult because a lot of us have to park on the road. But y'all managed that really well and we all were able to get out and go to work and appreciate it. Appreciate, I've been on here very long, but I sure appreciate everything, yeah.
Thank you.
And we're gonna miss you. I just got a couple of things. Um, the first thing, Luke ever sent you an email, Mitch, okay. So in the past, when someone has, um, not filled their tenure of, on any of the boards or commissions, usually they've sent a letter. So we haven't had to unappoint someone. So when I saw unappoint, I thought I very probably can just commit it, but it's not. It just seemed a little bit abrupt, so I ended to talk to him. So he was probably gonna have to step down because he's, his work schedule has made him miss several meetings in a row. He understands why we need to get people in here.
Who's this?
Luke DeGrand. Oh, um, so people that need to be able to come, especially planning mission. There's hopefully gonna be some more big stuff coming this year and we'll get some more people in here that are able to attend, so. He understood and I talked to him, we got here with conversations. So first, um, so consider an appointment of Luke DeGrand from the Pale Planning Commission.
This is the first time for everything, so.
Yeah, I.
I've already heard of this, but I will do it. Uh, consider unemployment of Luke DeGrand. That's not a pale, well, Plan Commission, Miss Mayor.
Second. McMahon.
Hi.
Case.
I.
Brown.
Uh, Shield.
I.
All right, thank you. Usually we don't have to do that because they usually send in a letter. Um, but this time that wasn't the case, but I did visit with him, so he knows about it. And he was friends. Okay, um, last thing, thanks again, Kurt. I thought before I came, I should have last read through all my old emails to you. I've had so many so many different requests and not requests, but questions. And you're always so good about responding and helping me. So thank you very much. You've been wonderful, but it's good for the city. All right. That's everything. Then we can adjourn after your questions.
I'll do it.
Second.
Pressure's on.
McMahon.
Hi.
Case.
I.
Brown.
Hi.
Shield.
I.
All right, we do your turn.